Meeting number 29 is now. James, meeting number 29 is now called to order. Uh, this is March 4th, 2019, it is 5:30 PM and we are in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen.
Wilson. Here. Phillips?
Here.
Graham Murray?
Here.
McCamell?
Here.
Rinker?
Here.
Okay, first we have the consent agenda, all matters listed under item 1 consent agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual financials. Let me start this again, gang.
It's your accent.
It's my accent, is that what it is? Uh, we have the usual finances and miscellaneous minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer liquor, wine and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have seven resolutions. The first is a resolution approving final acceptance, final payment and release of retention monies for the 2018 Public Works Building Roof Replacement Project. The second is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The third is a resolution approving addendum to the hotel motel tax agreement between the City of Burlington and the Burlington, West Burlington Area Chamber of Commerce, Greater Burlington Convention and Visitors Bureau. The fourth is a resolution amending tree trimmer license fees. The fifth is a resolution to install a stop sign for northbound traffic at the intersection of Cherry Street and Box Street. The sixth is a resolution approving renewal of taxi cab vehicle for hire license for Dennis Charles Maines doing business as Yellow Cab Transportation LLC. And then the seventh is a motion to approve preliminary loan participant package for sewer revenue refunding bond series 2019B. Uh, we have two hearings, uh, set. The first is for consideration of a lease agreement with Amtrak for Burlington Depot, that'll be March 18th. And then the second is consideration of a transit grant application, that will be April 15th. And we have one appointment, Mayor Proton.
Yes, we have, uh, Mark Miller, uh, appointed to the Parks Advisory Committee. We thank you for your service on that one.
Right on. Okay, Leon, what do you want to have removed?
Since you introduced me, I guess I don't have to.
Uh, please do, we love when you do that.
State your name for the reference, please.
All right, Leon Chahan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. Item number three, please. The resolutions.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a motion?
Does anyone else have any?
Huh? Anybody else? You know nobody else, it's just Leon. Okay. Can I get a motion?
Yes, I move to approve all items listed under item 1 consent agenda with the exception of resolution number three.
Second.
Gotcha.
Is it?
Yep.
No, he doesn't want resolution, you want?
On the consent agenda?
You're looking at the wrong page. It's resolution approving number three.
Last page.
Well, now it's all becoming clear. You want to move number three?
Yeah.
All right, okay. This is, uh.
Wait, let's vote on it. We need to vote, sorry. Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
I.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCamell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
You're supposed to be watching my back on that. It's okay, all right. Now can I go forward?
Yes.
All right, we're ready to go. Uh, now's, uh, time for consideration of a 2019A amendment for urban renewal plan for Burlington Consolidated Urban Renewal Area related to use of incremental property tax revenues for public improvements.
Uh, so, anytime that we add a project that to be eligible for consideration of using TIF funds, we need to revise or amend our urban renewal plan. The CIP for this year, one of the items is for the demolition of the former Police Department building, uh, with a cost of approximately $500,000 built in to be paid for, uh, using TIF funds. Uh, in order to do that, we have to amend our plan to include that as an eligible use uh, for TIF financing. Uh, the resolution that's attached in here does amend that plan to incorporate that project into, uh, our TIF, uh, capital project list.
I have one question regards to that. Um, I understand that the purposes of the funds at this point are to tear the building down. However, last week we talked about creating some type of incentive, which was in a request for proposal.
Mm-hmm.
Um, any financial incentive, will it come out of these same funds or is that a different bottom money?
It would end up, uh, you could have, we would redirect the specific $500,000. It's part of a bond issue. Um, the item number four in here is the borrowing 4.9 million. Included in that is $500,000 to do the demolition. Uh, those would get, if we are able to go through the process of doing the resolution, uh, that's later in the agenda for, uh, seeking redevelopment proposals, you move forward with that process, you get a proposal that you feel worthwhile considering, uh, under the terms that's listed in there, uh, that's a hundred thousand upfront cash with, uh, for a project if, as it goes to completion, uh, that would then be eligible for a hundred and fifty thousand from the city, a hundred thousand plus an extra fifty. Um, you, if you were going to use TIF funds to fund that, you would have to have that project listed specifically for redevelopment. So we'd have another amendment to the TIF plan later on. It would be a separate action taken.
Questions or concerns from the audience?
Leon Chahan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. You all know by now how I feel about TIF. I guess the first problem I have, $500,000 seems a lot to tear down that building given its condition. Second, I, I hope all of you understand what's involved when you're using TIF funds. Roughly a third of the cost of that demolition, when you use TIF funds, would be used, would be from the school district, that's what TIF is. And right now, the school district is hurting, we don't need to add to their woes.
Thank you, Mr. Chahan. Anybody else from the audience? I see none. Counsel, any other questions?
Jim, the, the hundred thousand, not related to the TIF, but the hundred thousand payment that you said upfront, how's that, are there any steps or any parameters to that? I mean, we just don't write a hundred thousand dollar check in?
Well, we can kind of cover that when we get to that resolution, item later on in the agenda.
Thanks.
Move to close.
Second.
Moved to second, Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCamell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
You and I have a resolution to approve 2019A Amendment to Urban Renewal Plan for Burlington Consolidated Urban Renewal Area.
Second.
Kathleen, let's vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCamell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Okay, number two is consideration of plans on specs for the 2019 Locust Sewer Separation Project. Mr. McGregor?
Good evening. We will be reviewing, or rather, Matt Wildman from HR Green, the project engineer, will review, uh, some of the general topics that we discussed last week. Uh, but this project, upon approval tonight, uh, will be put out to bid, uh, over the web. Um, and then we will receive plans, it's, it's part of a bigger proj- um, we have, next week, we have a public hearing on the environmental for SRF, uh, loan, which is, which is the borrowing source that we use to pay for it. And then, uh, we'll have a, a hearing later once we actually know the, the bid dollar figure for what we have to borrow. So, I'll let Matt go into the plans.
Matt Wildman with HR Green. Good to see you all again. You're with me tonight, I was, uh, I was in bed sick most of the weekend. I'm feeling better today, but I don't know how well my voice is going to hold up, so. I apologize. So just don't ask me any questions once I finish. Be the moral. Um, I'm going to quickly kind of go through, um, a little bit of background and then I'll get into the specifics of the plans and specs. I'm not going to go through, like last week, I'm not going to go through all hundred and some pages of the plans with you guys, but if there are specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them. So this one I'm going to talk about is, uh, some of the basic terms. Review collection system, talk a little bit about inflow and infiltration, or INI, give some background on the project, and then talk some of the specifics. Um, basic terms that I will use, and if there are any questions about any other terms that I throw out during the presentation, sometimes I take them for granted, but if there are questions about what I'm talking about, feel free to ask. Um, storm water is basically rainwater. Any clean water that's getting into the sewer system would be considered storm water. Waste water is any water generated by humans or businesses that is supposed to go down the sanitary sewer and get further treatment at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, the sanitary sewer is what conveys wastewater. Storm sewer conveys the storm water. And a combined sewer is what basically is remaining in the Maslau District in town, which conveys both storm water and sanitary. So, inflow and infiltration would be water that finds its way into the sanitary sewer. Uh, inflow would be kind of direct connections, either there's storm intakes that are tied into a sanitary sewer, uh, water that runs in through open manhole covers, uh, area drains that drain into the sanitary sewer that is clean water that's not supposed to get in there. Infiltration is water that seeps in through cracks and other deficiencies in the sewer system. So infiltration is a, is a longer duration, slower kind of inflow into the sewer. As you would imagine, most of that is like a groundwater source, something that's in the, in the ground that's seeping in. Um, combined sewer overflows, uh, there are four of them remaining in town, all of them in the Maslau District. This Locust project is going to remove one of those CSO locations, uh, from the city. So there will be three remaining after that. That is basically anywhere where we have these combined sewers left, where we have a significant flow event, where the sewer capacity cannot handle it anymore and it overflows onto the ground into a stream, into the river. Um, that's a combined sewer overflow. Sanitary sewer overflow occurs where the sewers have been separated, you have a sanitary sewer and it doesn't have the capacity to convey sanitary waste. And so those overflow and that would be out of manholes or other locations where there's not capacity remaining. So, CSOs are combined, sanitary sewer overflows are simply the sanitary sewer. Any question on those terms? Um, this just illustrates kind of the difference pictorially, what I just talked about. This is a combined sewer, so you've got sanitary drains, you've got storm intakes, you've got roof drains, all tying into a combined sewer. If the sewer does not have adequate capacity, it overflows into a stream, river, gully, wherever it can overflow, it overflows. Most of those, at least in Burlington, we have controlled points where it's a designated overflow location, it's a permitted outfall basically at this time. Uh, the separated system, you basically have parallel pipes. You have a storm sewer which takes on the roof drains, the sewer, the storm drains, and then you have a sanitary sewer which takes the sanitary waste. And, uh, here you see, uh, s- overflow out of the storm sewer and that would not be a, a bad situation, that's basically storm water that would be overflowing there. So that's a separated sewer system on the right. There we go. Uh, this is just an illustration of what I talked about earlier with the inflow and infiltration. Um, you can see the cracks in the pipes and the manholes, that would be infiltration that would seep in in those areas. Uh, inflow into the sewer would basically be coming through like a top, through a manhole lid, uh, through root intrusion into the pipes where you have water that, you get rain, it follows those roots down, the roots are penetrating into the pipe, so you get a pretty quick inflow into the sewer system where that water is seeping in, finding those roots, and then getting directly into the pipe through those locations. So that's an illustration of the inflow and infiltration. Bear with me. Um, so, why do we need a separate system? Why do we need to separate the combined sewers in town? We have an administrative consent order to eliminate all CSOs by the year 2025. Um, and then further on that, to eliminate SSOs and include storage tanks or EQ tanks in the system by the year 2028. So there is currently, um, kind of concurrently going on, a, uh, integrated plan, which is being done by others, and a sewer master plan, which we're working on right now. We've submitted kind of a second draft of that to city staff. We'll be hopefully going over that, uh, to get any further input on that sewer master plan. Uh, but that's going to outline basically the process moving forward, uh, looking to manipulate those dates that are in the administrative consent order to get a little more time, uh, due to the financial burden that all these projects, to do everything that needs to be done right now is, is, is projected to take a very long time and an exorbitant amount of money to do that. So, something has to give and the integrated plan and the sewer master plan are, are working to find a way that's, that's within the financial means and a reasonable timeframe, um, as far as DNR enforcement or EPA enforcement goes. So, there'll be more on that stuff coming, uh, to you guys in the very near future, I'm sure. Um, advantages of a separate system, uh, once you have that system separated, as you can imagine, some of the smaller rainfall events that don't lead to a CSO situation, all that rainwater still getting into the sewer system and goes to the treatment plant, so Don has to deal with that down there. We'd rather not send all that water to him, we don't want him to have to treat all the clean water, uh, in that system. So, it's less, less operation cost to have less water going to the treatment plant. Uh, you avoid SSO and CSO conditions by, by separating those systems. Um, avoid backup in the basements by, by relieving capacity in that sanitary sewer system basically and conveying that all in storm water. And allows for beneficial use of that storm water. It's not happened to, to be commingled with the sanitary waste, so it's a better product in the end. So, project maps, the area that we're talking about, um, basically there's, there's three real main basins in town, Hawkeye Basin, which encompasses the circles, not really accurate as to all of the area that's included in the Hawkeye Basin. The Maslau Basin, which is a basin we're kind of focusing on with, with some of this work, and then the Cascade Basin, which is on the southern part of town. Um, the Maslau Basin itself, the Market, Angular, Locust, which is where we're focusing, and then South, components of that basin located there. Here I've highlighted Locust in yellow. Um, this is currently a combined system, so there's one, one combined sewer pipe that runs through that basin. Um, there's one CSO location down at the very bottom here, water, when the sewer is inundated and can't convey that water anymore, we have an overflow point where it overflows into the river. This is a very, very much a fully developed area, as is the rest of the Maslau Basins. This is the most densely, um, developed area in town. So there's not a whole lot of flexibility here to, to do some of the same methods of separation that were done in Hawkeye and Cascade historically. We don't have a lot of room to add large EQ tanks, uh, to outfall storm water into various gullies and drainage areas. It's a lot more densely populated, so we, we kind of had to look at a different strategy. Historically, the Hawkeye and Cascade, when we started to look at some of the flow metering results from those basins, have had some limited success in eliminating the amount of inflow and infiltration getting into those systems, so when it rains, we're still seeing large spikes and flows which are leading to SSOs now instead of CSOs as they were in the past. Um, some of the concerns that we talked about, aging infrastructure, the pipe, we've looked at some of the conditions of the pipe, the pipe is very old, lots of cracks, separated joints, collapses taking place, I know, um, there've been different areas of complete failure of pipes that have had to take care of emergency repairs. So in looking at that, um, to reuse some of that pipe, we wanted to be very careful with how we were reusing that. If we're going to reuse it as sanitary sewer, we want to make sure we've lined it to restore it to basically a like new condition. If we're going to reuse that as storm sewer, at least then if the water's infiltrating into a storm sewer pipe, it's just being conveyed and discharged with storm water. So if that clean water's in there now, it's okay if it's acting more like a tile line than, than trying to be a sanitary sewer where we want to keep all that extra water, all the clean water, out of it. So, the, a big problem with INI, and I'll kind of show you a graph of this that shows you some of the issues that we see. Um, it is a combined sewer, it does have a CSO. Uh, some of the storm sewers that we looked at reusing were undersized in this basin, they wouldn't even convey a, one or a two-year storm event, which happens very frequently. Um, seems like more and more frequently as we move on in time here. But we had to look at upsizing some of those storm sewers just to convey some of those minimal storm events. Um, also, there are several areas in the Locust Basin that had a very poor pavement condition. So when we looked at this, if we were tearing up areas to put in new pipe and it made sense to replace the whole road, we wanted to go ahead and do that now instead of replacing half of it now and leaving the second, other half of the road in very, very poor conditions. So, we did look at, uh, at some of those areas where we could do that. Um, the Locust Basin, the reason that we chose this basin, first of all, was because it is the smallest of those Maslau Basins. So, in trying a new approach, we wanted to make sure that this approach had validity. So we're going to do the smallest basin first, we're going to monitor those results. We have a flow meter in now, currently at the bottom of Locust. So as we finish this project up, even during the progress through this project, we'll be able to look at the flow meter, look at the results from that and verify that we did indeed eliminate some of the spikes, we eliminated some of the base infiltration that's getting into that sewer system. And make sure that this approach is going to be a good approach to take moving forward. When we move on to Market and Angular and South, we want to make sure that every dollar we spend now is not going to lead to, you know, more dollars needing to be spent in the future on those basins like we're currently kind of looking at in Hawkeye and Cascade. So we want to make sure that that's going to work. So we didn't want to try this out on one of the largest basins, we wanted to make sure we limited, limited what we did to make sure it's going to work. So, the, the data here will also be used in the master plan, which, when we update you on that, um, coming up, you'll, you'll see what I mean. But we made a lot of assumptions in the master plan for what those future costs were going to be. Once we can demonstrate here in this basin and maybe in another basin or two within, uh, within the Maslau Basin, we'll be able to fine tune some of our assumptions and really start to narrow down some of the costs that are, that are going to come out in the future for those, uh, for the sewer master plan project. So this is an example, this is a graph that I was, uh, that I was alluding to earlier. You can see here, the, the flows, and these are, are several meters that we have out in the basin. Some of these are in Hawkeye, uh, I think one of them is in Cascade and one of them is in Locust. And the one that's in Locust is this line right here. So, this rainfall here, this dash line represents the rainfall. And apologize for the, i- i- it looks a little bit weird because it looks like the sewer spikes before the rainfall actually occurs, but if you can just imagine this line shifting over to right here. So this peak lines up with, with the peak in that flow meter. The timing of the data as to when they report is just a little bit off. But what's happening is we get a rainfall event and the flow in Locust goes from this base flow amount, spikes up, and that's about a thirty peaking factor that's happening on that flow immediately, when it rains. And then it drops back down after it quits raining, and then it levels back off again. This indicates that this is inflow, which makes a whole lot of sense because it's a combined sewer. So it rains, water goes down the intakes, and the flow immediately spikes and it quits raining and the flow goes right back down. So that's exactly what we'd expect to see. Now, when we get this separated, we expect, in an ideal world, that this flow would just keep running right on through after it rains. But what we're seeing is that these other basins down here are having the same result and these peaking factors are in the neighborhood of an eight to ten peaking factor. So, when it rains, the flow is increasing by about eight times in those basins and these are all separated basins. But we can see there's a lot of inflow still remaining in those basins. So that's something that we need to look at getting rid of in the future to help control some of that flow that's coming in, and that would help eliminate some of those SSOs that are occurring. So, in Locust, right now, we expect this number to come down here to more like two, three, four peaking factor instead of the thirty peaking factor that we're seeing now. Any questions on that graph?
So what do you theorize is causing the inflow to still occur? Is that just, uh, refresh my memory, what, you, you said earlier what it comes from, but refresh my memory.
Yeah, the inflow is coming from, it could either be crossconnections where there's, there's still some storm drains connected to it, it could be deteriorated pipe and manholes.
The tree roots and?
Tree roots, that sort of thing. There's, there's a, a fraction of this, and even in Locust, we don't expect that number to go to zero because a lot of INI ultimately comes from home connections. So those service pipes running from the home, stuff that you guys don't have a whole lot of control over because it's not city-owned infrastructure. So we still expect there to be some peaking factor that's going to occur from those home connections, whether that be some pumps, roof drains, area drains within yards and stuff. That stuff can still all contribute to that inflow coming into the sewer.
Thank you.
Yep. So, Locust, the existing system, and most of these graphs here, uh, or figures are going to be very small, so I, hopefully all the important stuff is large enough that you can see what it is. This is basically just the, the Locust Basin, what's there existing. So the lines represent the pipes, the little boo- blue dots on there are storm intakes and the yellow dots are manholes. So that's basically, there's not a whole lot of pipe in the grand scheme of things in this system, so that's kind of why we chose to start there. This is a cover sheet off of the plans, which hopefully we'll be approving here later with the resolution. Um, this is, uh, the paving plans for the, uh, for the project. So we've got, um, the red here represents new concrete alleys. And I'll show you some pictures of why we're, we're doing some of the stuff we're doing here as we go. But there's two new alleys that we're going to be replacing with all new concrete alleys. Um, asphalt patches are going to be in these blue areas where we're going to be, going down half the street or a portion of the street, and we're going to be patching back in asphalt in those areas. And the, uh, yellow areas would be new concrete streets. So there's basically three new concrete streets that are going to be, uh, completed as part of this project. And I'll show you illustrations of each one of those as to why we're doing that. Uh, this is South Street and Ninth Street. This is, uh, one of the storm intakes that's right across the street from, from Grimes School, I believe there. This is right on the pedestrian ramp and that is a very large open intake. As part of this project, all the intersections that we're working on, all of the ADA ramps are going to be replaced with, with compliant, uh, ramps. There'll be a few of those, I think that because of slopes in the areas, we still can't actually meet those ADA requirements, but we will be submitting waivers on all of those to the state and stating why we can't meet the correct slopes on those. But all of them will be, um, replaced, uh, where we're doing work. Uh, the intakes will be replaced with more conventional, safer, standard-type storm intakes. So this one in this example will move down here away from the, uh, pedestrian access where the kids are crossing to go to school there. So we'll make it, uh, better in the end, um, even though this is a sewer, sewer project, we're going to be fixing the pavement in those areas as well. And this is just a, an example of the plan for this area. So, each one of these intersections, even though we're, we're replacing some of the sewer pipes in some of these areas, we are taking care of all the sidewalk and stuff around those intersections as well. This is an alley between, uh, Central and Tenth Street. Um, you can see the condition here of the alley is, is not great, but you can also see more importantly, that to get a pipe down this alley, there's just not a lot of room to work in there. And that's the case with the other alley that we're replacing, this is one of the ones that we're placing new. This is the other one that we're replacing new, and as you can see, there's just not a whole lot of room to dig and set spoils and save even a portion of that alleyway. So those are the ones that we're replacing with new alleys. Um, this one is, is one of the streets that is getting replaced, this is Seventh Street, so this will be a full width concrete with new curb and gutter in that area as well. This street, hard to see with the shade from, on a sunny day in there, but the street is, is seen its better days. So, that one is one that we're getting. So that one is one that we're getting replaced. This is an example of Fifth Street, which is also getting full-width replacement. It's just not, it's not at a point where any type of patching on that street is gonna do it a whole lot of good, so.
You don't think so?
Yeah. That's, that's one. And then the last one here that we're getting, oh, this is a pad, this is a, I'm sorry, I'll get to Third Street in a second. This is South, South Street at Town, and this, we're patching South Street, and you can see South Street is in very good condition. So we're gonna be minimizing disturbance as much as we can to that road, and then we'll be replacing that back with asphalt. Locust Street, again, this street has been maintained, a few more cracks, but they've been sealed at this point, and it's not worth a full, full street replacement here, just adding cost to it. So we're gonna be asphalt patching half of that road as well where we do our work. This is Third Street, and this is South of Locust. This is getting a full-width concrete replacement as well. This street doesn't have curb and gutter. Through the whole length of it, the street is, is basically one step away. After this winter, it may be a gravel road at that point, so may need replacement.
Maybe.
Badly, yeah. And this is looking down. You can see on the sides here, no curb and gutter down the street. It's washing away some of these driveway approaches and gulling on, on each side of the road there. So we're gonna put concrete street in there, curb and gutter down both sides. And up at the, the far south end of that street, up at the top of the hill, there is, there's no outlet up there. We've designed and are gonna put in a hammer handle up there for turnaround access. And you can kinda see the edge of that here, the turnaround on the plans. At the top of that road, the road comes up and crests and starts to go down towards that dead end. And so there's a lot of storm water up there that doesn't really have a good place to go. So we're putting in a, basically a, a bio-retention area infiltration basin up there. So that, the storm water from the crest to the very end of that road will all flow down, flow through a couple of curb cuts into a rock basin. So this area that's hatched right here will all be rock. It'll have some monitoring wells in it to monitor the level of water in that basin. So the water will be able to infiltrate there, instead of what it does now is it kinda runs over the edge down onto South Street. This will be, this is basically the first step of green infrastructure that we hope to implement in many of these project areas, so. Any questions on that? The storm sewer plan, these are the areas where we're putting in new storm sewer on the project, which looks like a significant amount here. These are the areas where the storm sewer was not adequately sized to be able to, to convey these very minimal storm events. And then the sanitary sewer, some of the sanitary sewer, we're looking at lining the existing combined sewer where we could, where the size was appropriate, the condition was, was okay. So in these areas where the red pipes is, we're lining that sewer, and the yellow pipes are basically replacement sanitary sewer. So between these two drawings, you can see that we're gonna have basically parallel pipes all the way down to the end of the project area between the storm sewer and the sanitary sewer that we're putting in on the project. So we'll have a separated system. The sanitary sewer will be like new conditions. So hopefully those peak, peaking factors will drop way down to where we can eliminate that from the sanitary system and not send it to the treatment plant.
Quick question for you.
Yep.
You keep saying that some of these lines aren't big enough to be able to handle the amount of water they need to handle. How big are they? And how big are the lines that we're putting in?
That's a great question, and I don't have my plans in front of me to be able to tell you that, but for the most part.
Are we talking about like twelve-inch pipe or are we talking about thirty-six-inch pipe?
We're talking, in this area, we're talking about eight to twelve-inch pipe for the most part.
That's what's there today?
That's what's there today, yeah.
Okay.
And we're talking about upsizing, I think, to eighteen-inch in some areas. And we're not going a lot bigger, we're going enough bigger.
Okay.
So, but yeah, this one, with it being a smaller basin like this, we're not talking, the, the other basins, we're talking about big pipes. When we get down to the bottom of some of those Market and Angular and South basins, we're talking about some very, very large pipes.
Okay. If you could go back to the two graphs, I guess I, you lost me a little bit because it says line sanitary sewer there, and if you go back to the other one, oh, that's storm sewer.
Yeah, and that's new storm sewer, yeah.
That's where I lost you for a second, sorry about that.
Yep, no problem. So the, the engineer's estimate on this, or the opinion of cost, is five point six million dollars. We've got a six hundred thousand CDBG grant for, for the project, and the rest of it will be funded through an SRF loan on the project. So I'm hoping that we are not the low bidder on the project at five point six million. So I'm optimistic that bids are gonna come in under that, but don't hold me to that because I just never know.
I'm gonna hold you to that.
Yeah. I think that's all I've got, so be happy to attempt to answer any questions. My voice held out long enough.
Let me start with the audience. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions? Sewer separation? Leon. I'm sorry, Mr. Shea.
Leon's just fine. I guess I'm perplexed because the Hawkeye sewer is one of the first that was done, and you're still saying you're having inflow problems. I guess before we proceed on this, I guess, has that been investigated?
Mr. McGregor?
I'll answer that.
Yep.
Yes, the Hawkeye sewer has quite a bit of inflow and infiltration issues. We're aware of those issues. However, we have been so pushed towards trying to meet compliance, all of our money and time have been spent on separation purposes. So we're aware, when we, when we went in to separate in the Hawkeye basin, we went in and simply installed new storm sewer to, to convey it and sep, and separate the two systems. So we didn't do anything to the sanitary system. So a lot of that sanitary system is a hundred years old, especially towards the east part of town. We actually have a CIP item in the upcoming budget for the Brook Street INI, which is a lining project.
As Matt mentioned, our peaking factors tend to be in the ten range on the, which is significantly better than Locust, but it's still a different philosophy than what this separation is. This separation is designed to get more down to the four to five. It's a different philosophy for how sewer separation is done, but it is also way more expensive.
I guess my only concern is when it was done along Mount Pleasant Street, there was a beehive that nobody knew about, and it was causing problems as in the sidewalk was about to collapse. I guess the first step on some of these areas, maybe somebody should walk them and see what's there. I, I'm just a little concerned spending that much money with the results that we've had along Mount Pleasant Street. Now, I'm compliant otherwise. My neighbors are compliant. They pulled their gutters downspouts out of the sanitary sewer because in that part of the neighborhood at one time, those all hooked in sanitary sewer. And you're still getting those inflows. That, that's troubling to me, spending this much money.
Thank you, Leon. Anybody else from the audience?
I'm Eric Renteria, five twenty-one North Sixth Street. You know, I, first of all, I wanna commend you guys. I think you've done a great job in, in terms of putting this project together as it has been mandated. I, I think it's important to step back from a project like this every once in a while and think about how it is that we operate as, as a government system. A mandate comes in like this, and, and the impact of it is so far reaching beyond this discussion. It affects, it affects our taxes, it affects the livability of our city. The, the unintended consequences of a sixty million dollar project that's thrust upon a city the size of Burlington is enormous. And, and I, I wanna suggest that, that you are, you are protectors from state and federal government that infringes. If, if you go back to nineteen oh three, federal government taxes were about, they were the smallest of the three taxable entities. The federal government was about three percent, state was about four and a half, local governments were about seven. Of course, that's entirely reversed. Local governments today are one to three percent. State is somewhere in the nine, and federal's somewhere in the thirty. Today, we have to beg back money that's our money from, from the more powerful entities that are dictating that we take these kinds of actions. And I just think it's important that you, as our representatives, press back against these kinds of programs because for this program in particular, I don't know that we're getting much for our money. And in the, if, if this was a business and you were choosing to do this, you wouldn't choose to do it.
Amen, brother. Thank you, Mr. Renteria. Anybody else from the audience? Appreciate you both, and both comments. Counsel?
Matt, can you allude a little bit why we're doing this? I mean, some of it's speculative, but isn't planetary reasons and things part of the, part of this? I mean, because of...
I don't quite understand the why.
So we have a consent decree that was signed, that the city agreed to back in, I don't know, the early two thousands. But part of that is a mandate through the EPA and the Clean Water Rules from the eighties that required this to occur. They've given us time to do it. We agreed by a consent decree. We signed off on the, essentially the full faith and credit of the city that we would do it on the schedule that we agreed to do it in. That being said, we are working on trying to get that renegotiated, but that is entirely up to the state to agree to allow us to do that. We can choose to decide not to do it. However, there are civil penalty, or there, there are monetary penalties that go with that. And they, they, I think it's up to, it's been a long time since I looked at this, a couple of years, in the five hundred thousand a day that they can fine you up to by statute through the Clean Water Act for not being in compliance. So it, yeah, we can push back, but we need to be careful because we are also guardians of the, of the taxpayers' dollars. We don't get to operate like a business. We're not supposed to declare bankruptcy when things go bad. We have to operate in a manner that helps us to be in business long-term. It, we're just under a different philosophy than what, what the private sector is, and we have to, we just, we just have to be. That being said, we do have an agreement that we've signed off on that we have to uphold.
But it's my understanding that we're doing it to clean up the waterways, and, and we do have a right to, to clean water, and it is expensive.
The larger issue that the federal government is concerned about is a hypoxia zone at the base of the Mississippi River.
The dead zone.
And they're concerned about all downstream folks. They're concerned about people in Fort Madison and Keokuk who may have their water supply come out of the Mississippi River. I know Don talks about the solution to pollution is dilution, but that's, that's not the way the EPA looks at it in terms of having clean water.
Right. Can you tell me what the original, did they give us an original date that they, you know, wanted us to have this done by?
Twenty twenty-eight is when we're required to. Twenty twenty-five for separation in EQ basins. We're allowed to do some measurements, modeling, and we're supposed to have the final equalization basins done, or tanks, in twenty twenty-eight. At the same time, they have talked with us about being willing to work with us on the time schedule and, and adjust that. It's just we need to go in to them and make our case. We're supposed, we got an extension to this June for going in and having a discussion with them.
So I know we are working, you know, to get that extended, and we're doing all the right things we need to be doing. What if we weren't? What if we just followed the schedule? What kind of costs would that?
If you, if we were to use the full separation that's part of H.R. Green's plan, that's about a hundred and twen, when you throw in engineering, about a hundred and twenty million dollars for comparison purposes on a system that generates about seven million annually. I'd have to run the cash flows on what it takes to cer, do the debt service over, even on, on a, even on a thirty-year loan. I think you might be able to get extended to forty on an SRF, but it's still gonna, a significant amount.
And what would, say we, say we did that, what would, I'm assuming we would raise taxes?
You would have to raise your sewer rates to cover it.
Sewer rates, not taxes.
You could theoretically use your debt service levy to pay for a portion of that. The debt service levy operates under a different scenario. I think under, it was noted in the resolution on the urban renewal plan, I think, is what, our ability is sixty million is our, somewhere in that neighborhood, our threshold for borrowing on the GO side. We have forty million borrowed on the GO side, so we have about twenty million of flexibility. We can't borrow that much.
Right.
And pay for it with property taxes. It has to be done through the sewer fund.
So my point is, is that I think that the city is doing just about everything we can in order to make this work and, and thinking about the citizens rather than just, that's, that's the point I'm trying to make.
And part of the problem that we've had, the mandates, and I think that DNR and EPA both recognize one of the byproducts, whether they care about it or not, it's a different thing. One of the byproducts of having these mandates is a lot of the other work that needs to be done doesn't get done. We're trying to use a sewer master plan to kinda prioritize other projects that need to occur, whether it's upsizing the lines within our system to get rid of some bottlenecks or taking care of our lift stations. Some of the lines that we know that are in danger of collapsing, similar to near the Angular Hy-Vee, we wanna take care of those areas because we spent fifteen years with nothing going into the system outside of dealing with these mandates, and we can't afford to have that happen moving forward for the next fifteen or twenty years.
So I, I've heard one thing, and I'd just like some clarification on it. So, and I either read it someplace or heard it come out of the mouth of somebody that is familiar with some of this, but I heard that about thirty or forty percent of our CSO work will take care of ninety percent of our problem. Is that, is that a fair statement or no?
I don't, I don't know how to even quantify that.
I don't know if they know. They can just put estimates on it at this point, Matt.
Yeah, the, it goes, it falls in line with many things, I guess, as far as that goes. That, you're gonna get, the first bit of the work is gonna remove, like in Hawkeye and Cascade, the amount of work that was done there took care of most of the problem, but not quite all. It's that last little bit of the problem that is gonna cost the most. And just like I know Don deals with at the treatment plant, to get most of the BOD, to get most of the suspended solids, most of the stuff that you need to get out of the water, you can do that fair, fairly cheaply in the grand scheme of things. But when they start ratcheting those limits down tighter and tighter, that last little bit costs more and more. So I think what you're saying is probably somewhat accurate, but as far as the CSO work goes, it's kind of an all or nothing. You gotta take care of the CSO, and we can eliminate those. That's fairly easy, but it's what you're left with when you do that that creates the problem. It's the INI that you don't necessarily get. So you can convert it from a CSO into an SSO relatively easily. And we could do that in these Mazel basins to get compliance, but it's not taking care of the, the bigger issue there, which is the ongoing. The, the work that was done in Hawkeye and Cascade, if we would've taken the approach that we're looking at taking in Mazel right now, the, the amount of money that would've been spent there would've been astronomical to try to get the benefit that, that you were gonna end up getting. Those basins lent themselves well to having EQ basins put in, to diverting and putting in storm sewer to take care of that water and get most of the storm water out. I don't think that the approach was a bad approach to have taken in those basins, and for the, for what it cost, it was very, very effective. And what we've gotta do now, and what we've gotta be smart about doing now, and we're trying to outline the approach in the master plan in a way that makes sense, is we need to pinpoint those areas that are the biggest problems and take care of those next. And if we can get those biggest problems taken care of, if there are still beehive intakes left, if we can find those, get them out of that system and start to see those peaking factors drop a little bit, what that does is it frees up capacity in the sewers and allows things to function the way they're supposed to. We're still gonna have storm water going to the treatment plant, probably forever. That's gonna happen, but we just need to get it to a manageable point where that everybody can deal with it, so, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
We have enough capital projects outlined in... We have enough capital projects outlined in the sewer master plan, I think, right now to take us comfortably for about eighty years.
Yeah.
That's, that's our existing needs. That's not taking into account what's gonna happen over time. So, or inflation, yeah.
All right. You guys good?
Everything starts with a step, which is this project, so.
Okay, well, we're baby stepping.
Yeah.
Baby step. Are we, are we good? We got a motion to close then.
Uh, Your Honor, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Ranker?
Aye. Your Honor, I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the two thousand nineteen Locust Sewer Separation Project.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Ranker?
Aye.
Okay, number three is consideration. Uh, where'd he go? Paid that ballot already? He's quick. Oh, there he is. All right. Thank you. Couldn't see him. Uh, number three is consideration of fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget.
Maybe Stephanie taking this?
Sure. So I'll go over my budget presentation, the same one I did last week. And if anybody has any questions that have come up, please feel free to ask them. So, we're gonna start off, this is the FY twenty budget that starts July first, twenty nineteen. Um, we're proposing a balanced budget with no tax increase. So we'll just do some high-level overviewing of, this slide is showing you the revenues by fund compared to FY nineteen to twenty. Um, you can see, um, our revenues are about ten million less than last year. Almost all of that decreases in our capital projects. We just have budgeted less capital projects this year, or next year. This year, and that sixteen million for nineteen, five point three of that was Mount, Mount Pleasant Street Bridge. And then we have our other, um, larger, a couple other larger projects. So, other than that, the revenues are pretty consistent year to year with the different funds. And then this is just another breakdown of the revenues by source. Still the fifty-nine million, but twenty-one percent of that is from property taxes. Five percent is from the tax increment, which is about three million. Non-property taxes make up about ten percent of our revenues. Included in that is our sales tax, um, lost for four million. Um, we have the hotel motel goes there for eight hundred thousand, um, cable franchise, two hundred and forty thousand, gambling revenue, two hundred thousand. So also, intergovernmental revenue is about fourteen percent. These are where all our grants are, coming from state, federal and local. Our road use taxes out of here, about three million. Transit grants are about seven hundred thousand. Backfill, um, gets coded here, which is four hundred thousand. Fire and ambulance, um, that other entities pay us is seven hundred thousand. So also, we have the Broadway Extension Grant in there and for four hundred thousand, and then the Roosevelt Traffic Signals, the money we're getting in grants is here too. Our charges for services, um, they make up thirty-one percent of our revenues. So these are all our funds that we charge fees. Now, included in this number is also the water works. Um, we're required to budget with them through the state, so they make up five point six million of that eighteen million. So city only that's left is twelve point six million. Half of that is sewer. And then the rest is split down between solid waste, ambulance, golf, recplex. And then you'll see some of the smaller, you know, fines and forfeitures, miscellaneous use of money and property, that's, um, interest. And then other financing sources, those are where all the bond proceeds go. So we're, you know, just what you approved tonight, capital projects, we're bonding four million, and then the sewer, um, bond proceeds are four point nine million. Any questions on our revenues? Okay, so for FY twenty, our expenditures are about fifty-nine million, so real close to what our revenues are. Um, and again, this is broken down by program, so you'll see the public safety, public works, um, really consistent. The only, you know, drop here is the capital projects also, the drop in the revenues and the drop in expenditures. But other than that, um, all the programs are pretty consistent from the prior year. And then this graph is gonna show you broken down by the type of our expenses. So thirty-four percent of our total expenses are wages and benefits, um, that personnel services. The debt service, that's where we code all our principal and interest payments, that's fourteen percent. Capital outlay, that's our capital projects, that fourteen percent. Commodities are four percent, that makes up supplies. And then contractual services is thirty-four percent. Here is where water works is coded, which is five point five million of that expense. And then also the sewer separation gets coded here as a professional service, four point nine percent. So, that's why that accounts rather large. Here, we're just showing, um, the proposed property tax rate, which is no increase from the prior year. And then this shows you the past ten years of the history of what our property tax rate has been for the city, where we've had increases mostly. And this slide is breaking down, um, the amount of money that we do get, um, when it, the property taxes broke, broken down on the state form. So you can see on the far right-hand side, the property tax is sixteen point, or sixteen dollars and thirty-three cents. That's gonna bring in twelve million, five sixteen of property taxes and how it's broken down. We always like to show, um, if you do have a taxable residential property and if it's assessed at a hundred thousand dollars, how much state property tax you'll pay. This compares it for FY nineteen. So even though our property tax rate is staying the same, the rollback has increased this year. That number is set by the state of Iowa. So, um, the property owner here will see a slight increase of taxes of twenty-one dollars annually or a dollar seventy-seven monthly, based just strictly on that rollback increase. And here's the commercial. Um, there is no difference in the rollback. It's set at ninety percent. So they will see no, um, increase or decrease on the property taxes that they'll pay this year compared to last year. So this graph just shows where does my talk, my tax dollars go. Of that house valuation of a hundred thousand dollars, you're gonna pay property taxes annually of nine hundred and thirty dollars. You'll see that a hundred and fifty-eight dollars will go to the fire to support the fire department. Police is two eighty-nine, library's sixty, parks and rec is sixty-five dollars. That includes the auditorium port, senior center, our parks, forestry, pool, day camp. Debt service will take up two hundred and sixteen dollars of that. Public works, this includes engineering and transit and depot. The community development, that's the building code enforcement and development department. And then general administration, that's basically what's left of the general government. That's where city council is, the city manager, city clerk, finance, IT, HR, legal, and our insurance. This is just comparing us to other communities that have, um, over twenty thousand in population. You can see we're, um, down towards the bottom, we're basically in the same category as we were last year. This shows by our population how much taxable value, and you can see the taxable value per capita. And you can see the lower the taxable value for capita correlates to usually a higher tax rate. We, we just don't have enough valuation, um, to get what we need without having a little bit higher tax rate. So, um, you can see all the difference. We also have our eight-ten levy. That's the max we can tax. So, where we compare there, oh, I do. Sorry. So now we'll just, um, go over some of the factors that impacted the budget. Um, you can see, um, on the left-hand side is our taxable valuation. Um, it did have a five point four increase. The TIF increased ten percent. So overall, it was a four point eight percent, which this was a good year for us to see that type of increase, um, one of the larger increases we've seen in the past few years. So then on the other side, you can see, um, comparing the property taxes that we'll take in as an increase of six hundred thousand. And again, that's without raising the property tax rate. This slide's gonna show you, um, our health insurance premiums. Um, they're projected to increase two point seven percent. We do have them in this budget at five percent. That's based on our union contracts. Um, we have language in there that they can't go over the five percent each year or else we have to make adjustments. So you can see the prior year, we budgeted five percent, but it actually increased six percent. So this year, we'll see some, little bit of savings that will need to be carried to next year based on what the rates come in next year. The pension, um, IPRs had no change in the employer contribution this year compared to last year. And we did see the fire and police pension, um, decrease slightly, that one, one point six percent decrease. And that's all the employer side, what we have to put in. So here's just a slide that shows the health insurance caps for the last five years on where it gets maxed out, where we, we know we can't go over. This year, um, the employees are contributing eight percent based on, um, the single and family health and dental rate, so. So this slide's gonna show us just the general fund revenues broken down by source. So out of the general fund, fifty-one percent of our money comes in through taxes. You can see that has the highest increase this year compared to last year based on the increase in valuation. All the other, um, taxes are pretty much steady or just a slight decrease. But overall, um, our general fund revenues are up five percent. And this slide is just showing our general fund expenditures. You can see it is increasing about five hundred thousand compared to last year, which is a two point five increase. Um, our budget is twenty million of expenditures out of the general fund. And you can see we break it down by departments here. Police is thirty-two percent, fire twenty-eight, and then as the rest of them go down. Um, but as the increases and decrease that, the, the far right column, you can see, we're pretty steady. Um, the police has a slighter increase. This is, this was caused by, um, DESCOM increased eleven percent, the, the amount that we put towards DESCOM. Again, that's just in the police. It's kind of like just where it's always been coded, but it is for all, all the public service departments. Um, and then we have that, you know, higher increase in utilities and police of fifty thousand. But other than that, each, the other departments are pretty steady on, on the expenditures compared to last year. So this is gonna show you, you know, we're only bringing in thirteen million of revenues in the general fund, but our expenditures are tw- twenty million, where we make up the difference. Um, it comes through that transfer in number of seven point three million. Basically, that's transferring in the local option sales tax money. We transfer in two point five or two point two percent for property tax relief. Another million to support our police department. We support about eight officers out of local option sales tax. Um, the emergency, um, levy and the employee benefit levy, those all get coded to special revenue funds, but in turn, then they all get transferred back. And that's about another three point seven million that gets transferred back into the general fund. And then we do have one transfer out of the general fund. That's the hotel motel tax revenue. That gets coded into the general fund by state code, and then we transfer it out and, into a separate, um, revenue fund. So overall, we've just got a slight increase budgeted this year for the general fund of eleven thousand compared to about ten thousand last year. So we're basically holding steady, which is good because we're at that fifteen percent general fund balance right now where we wanna be, so we're, we're balanced. So moving on to some of the enterprise funds, sewer fund, I know we talked about this during the individual budget talks, but it's projected to increase three percent as of July first. Stormwater, the, the ERU fee will also increase three percent, basically to keep up with our EAP requirements and increased operating cost. Solid waste fund, we do not have an increase budgeted for this year, July first. The prices will stay the same as they are right now. That fourteen twenty-five per month for the thirty-five gallon, um, I know Don talked about in his presentation. We do have a slight increase for the waste management fee of ten cents. We're just absorbing that into the fees we already have established. And here's a slide with a lot of CIP projects on it, but just kind of a laundry list if you wanted to look, you know, quickly. What all are we projected to do in FY twenty? You can see the big one is the Maslau separation. Um, we have, you know, our basic streets, two million, Broadway Extension, one point four million, and that, the Highway sixty-one signalization at one point two million. So our hotel motel tax was budgeted for eight hundred and ten thousand dollars. That is split, seventy percent goes to us, thirty percent goes to the Convention and Vis- Visitors Bureau, up to seven hundred thousand. And then after the, anything budgeted over seven hundred thousand, we get sixty percent and they get forty percent. Our expenditures are budgeted a little bit higher than our revenues. We do have some fund balance in there, but they're budgeted at eight hundred and forty-five thousand, thirty-five dollars. Um, we break it down by these different categories. Um, def- you can see CVB is gonna get two hundred and fifty-four thousand. Auditorium has twenty-seven thousand, riverfront maintenance, um, park improvements, those are some of the, basically, equipment for golf and rec. The culture assistance, that's where we're helping out the symphony, the sit, the mini, muni band, the art guild, the Capitol Theater. And then the largest, um, budgeted expenditures is out of the special projects where a hundred and eighty thousand is recreation activities. That's going back to the general fund to help support, um, day camp and pool. And then you can see the others. We have a match for the dock grant, a hundred thousand. And then community field, basically, that's the utilities we pay for community field, about fifty thousand, seven eighty-five. So for our sales tax fund, we have budgeted four million, twenty thousand. This is a decrease of, from FY nineteen of a hundred and thirty-two thousand. For expenditures, um, budgeted out of sales tax fund, it's four million, fifteen thousand, one ninety-one. Almost half of that is for property tax relief. That two point two million will go back into the general fund. So will the next two, that about one million dollars, the police officers and vehicles and equipment. And then you can see the other things that we have budgeted, um, for lost. A lot of these things we talked about in the individual budget sessions, the senior center roof, a mower, kind of just a laundry list. Bus, bus purchase, economic development fund. And then this slide's just showing our, our, our legal debt margin. Um, Jim kinda was talking about this too. We have a debt limit in that it can't exceed five percent, um, of the full value, full assessed value. So for, which projected for FY twenty, um, the debt limit is sixty-seven million. We're at forty-two million, we'll be at, so the margin is twenty-five million. So we're about sixty-two percent. So our financial policies, um, we wanna stay under seventy percent or right at that seventy percent. And you can see the past, the last four years, or we're projecting to stay under that, um, based on our debt limit. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions. I know what was in the packet also was the, the state form that gets filed electronically with the state once it's signed off and approved tonight. That, and that's the form that's due March fifteenth, so.
Well, one of the questions I had a while back was about sales tax revenue and, um, some of the legislative stuff that has changed that says that we're supposed to be collecting that from online retailers. Have we seen any of those dollars come in yet?
We don't see detail like that.
I mean, they're getting collected, but we don't, we don't see individual, they, they won't break it down close. We don't get it by category. We don't get it really a tremendous amount more breakdown other than just a total. Uh, they're very particular about not releasing it. Plus, the rules require them to start having that collected by January, I think, in that ne- neighborhood. We haven't seen anything about actual trends. I haven't seen anything since, for the current year, that really says where we stand for projections for this year. They're always at least, I mean, they're true up for last year didn't occur until November, so they're always three, three to four months behind on being able to really have anything. Well, that's four and a half months behind to, to get anything that's really knowing for, really accurate for where they're at.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? Counsel? Yes, sir.
Leon Shahean, eighteen twenty-one, Mount Pleasant Street. Just before this meeting, past few days, we got our revaluation on our home. And if you look at your situation, um, and you're saying you're holding the millage rate the same, my property assessment went up twenty percent. Folks, that's terrifying. And, uh, in years past, whenever the assessed valuation goes up, so do the taxes. The millage rate just doesn't go down. And some of the things that I've heard, I really would have, all the charts that you presented tonight- And some of the things that I've heard, I really would have, all the charts that you presented tonight, I'd like to seen those on the website, I didn't see anything posted until Saturday, and it was just the state farm, form, which doesn't give me a whole lot of information. But I have a, a different way of looking at, at the budget. You talk about police and fire. Something you don't talk about is the money you give up, mostly give up, on economic development. I went through and made a list, and I did so quite quickly. But what you're spending on economic development is about 8.1 million dollars. That's a lot of money. Now, I'll get into the details of that. TIF, it was almost 3 million dollars. Abatements, and this is from the last meeting, I talked to the assessor, the dollar amount that was shown on what you approved the last meeting was just the impact on the city's tax revenue. That also impacts the schools and the county, which impacts me. That total was, if I'm correct on that, is about 1.3 million dollars, is what was given away the last meeting. On Randy Weingard's factory on Mount Pleasant Street, you write a check to him for $100,000 or more. I forget the exact amount, I couldn't find it in my files. The Recplex, the original Recplex is still burning cash over revenues to the tune of about $100,000 a year. The new bubble, I think you're in for a surprise. The heating and cooling cost on that is gonna be astronomical, and there's gonna be other costs. I'd, I'd throw, probably it'll burn $250,000 of cash. One of the items on the consent agenda is the tourism. That costs $250,000. And I view the tourism really as a publicly funded marketing department for a handful of businesses. I don't agree with doing that. And something that doesn't appear at all in your budget, and happened years ago, the casino head tax, which amounts for the, our community, about $500,000 a year. That goes to the Chamber of Commerce. Targeted jobs, and I know someone's gonna correct me on this, give me a second, is about 1, 1.4 million dollars. Now, somebody here is gonna say, well, that, that comes from the state. But most of the state's money funds our schools. So when they pay for economic development to the tune of 1.4 million dollars, that in essence is coming out of the schools' funding. And we all know the local school district is hurting. And it's complicated, and I'm looking at this from a broad base, not just individual. On some of the debt service, and, and this is really a quickie calculation, I found that about $800,000 of that is going to be for economic development. And then I could not find anything, but at one time, there was an assessment reduction for the casino and fun city that would, between the city, county, and schools, cost the taxpayers $440,000. What, what's happening here, and I, I keep, every year I hear this speech, well, our per capita property valuation is less than everybody else's. One of the things you do with economic development is you're untaxing the only property that generates revenue. My house doesn't generate revenue. I live in it. I don't have a business in my home, and neither do my neighbors and most of this community. They don't operate a business out of their home. Yet that's the sole source, if you project what you're doing with economic development, pretty soon that's gonna be your sole source of income. When you got a large population of people on social security, that's not gonna work. I have a fairly modest home. When you add the property taxes for the city, the county, and the school, plus your utilities, that's $2,000 a year. Now, if you have a widow, or a widow-er, so I don't get in trouble with, uh, me too.
I'm getting in trouble tonight, Leon.
Yes, I'm getting in trouble. $2,000 on somebody collecting $1,000, $1,100 a month social security, that just isn't going to work. And what I'm hearing on the sewer system, and, and you get big arguments on contingent liabilities. This issue with the sewer dates back to 1959. And it was, has never been a priority, and this thing has grown and has festered. And to what Eric said about a business, we need to have sewer systems. It's just unacceptable to dump raw sewage in the Mississippi River. But if you look at the cost of where we're at on trying to address that issue for a business, it'd be insolvent. And the difference between insolvency and bankruptcy is whether you've been to court or not. And with the cost of this thing, you're gonna start driving away residents. And what I'm asking you is, and I've talked about this time and time again, we spend all this money on economic development, and we're not really bringing in the high-paying jobs. It's not happening. We need to readjust our priorities to doing what cities are supposed to do. Police, fire, sanitation, water, basic services. You just can't afford to be in the investment banking business. At the same time, you're talking on trying to fund the sewer systems and bring that up to spec. We're trying to provide flood protection along the Mississippi River. You have to ask yourself, what's more important? That's a hundred million dollar project. With cost overruns. And what hasn't been brought up tonight is with our waterworks. You've got the same problem. That's another hundred million dollar problem. So you've got 300 million dollars out there with a population of less, less than 25,000 people. You really need to address your priorities. Economic development, we've been at it for over 20 years. Nothing's happened. Wages keep going down, the population is declining. You can't, you, you just can't bring businesses here for the wages that these businesses pay. You, you, they're just not gonna come. And unless you address this issue, you can either do an organized retreat or an agonizing death. You're not gonna grow this town. You've lost two generations of young people. It's not gonna happen. And people my age don't have children, thank God. So I ask you, when you, every time you do these economic development projects, the due diligence really hasn't been there. Now, some of these things don't come out of your, your pocketbook directly, like TIF. You're only paying a third of that. The rest comes from the school and the county. But that still hits me. Might not hurt your pocketbook, but it hits me. So I ask, going forward, just quit the investment banking. Quit trying to tame the Mississippi River. You're not gonna do it. And stick with what really needs to be done. Get your infrastructure up to date. Thanks.
Thank you. I was just getting ready to say that.
No, Leon, thank you. Is there anybody else?
You're gonna come up after what he just laid out?
I know, it's just a tough act to follow, Air France 321 North. You know, the, what I really wanna talk about is, is, relates to some of the things that Leon talked about, and that was the, the tax bills that, that we all got. And I know some people whose, whose assessments went up 30, $35,000. And, and you know, you can tax somebody right out of their home. You, you can literally tax them to the point where they can no longer afford to live where they live. And, and that oughta, that oughta frighten all of us. There was a, maybe I imagined it, there was a sense of, of giddiness about the increase in value, valuation for the city because of the flexibility that it gave us and some of the relief that, that we received as a city due to the pressures of being up against our. Giddiness. So that was my impression. But the, but I, I sat on the opposite side of that, and, and actually was distressed about the, the taxable valuation going up, because I, I think that means more taxes out of my pocket as we move forward. So that's a concern to me. And, but the most important thing that, that I think, that I think we all need to keep in mind is that it, it's, it's not always the great big bites, it, it's the thousand little bites. And so, we talk about no increase in, in, in the property tax rate, but just about everybody got a tax increase. And, and the reality of it is that everyone has gotten a tax increase in all of those years that are listed up there where there's no tax increase. Because the, the, the tax system in the state of Iowa is a little bit of a shell game. We don't increase your rate, but we change the rollback. We don't change the rollback, but we change the valuation. So we, hey, we didn't raise your tax rates. Correct, but you increased what it is that I have to pay. And so, to me, it's a tax increase even if you don't increase the tax rates. We see a $3 increase in the, in the, in the garbage, or I'm sorry, in the, in the water sewer bill. I just got a 14 something dollar increase in my water bill already. To not, we claim some, some victory in not raising a, a tax rate. And, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't really claim victory there. That, that bothers me, because.
Hold on, man, I gotta, I have to interject.
Sure.
Who's, who's giddy and who's claiming victory?
It's, it's just a sense of relief that I sense on you, on the council and the city's part.
I mean, how can you sense that? I mean, you've got a special nostril inside, how, how do you get that?
I can't give away that.
Seriously though, because I'm not giddy, and I'm not, I'm not happy about that. I'm not, you know, I don't, I don't consider that a victory at all. I want tax relief.
I agree with you.
But it is what it is.
Right. But there is a sense that there's.
Worth also pointing out that we don't set the valuations, the city does not. I think a lot of people have a misconception that we do. We don't have anything to do with those valuations.
I understand that. If I was sitting in your seat and I saw people that had a $30,000 increase in their taxable value, I'd be working very hard to lower their tax rate, so that they're not stung by this huge increase in their taxes. And I don't see any of that. So, so there is a, there's a, there is a sense of, maybe, maybe it's more a sense of relief on the part of the city and the council, in that you have now been given some wiggle room when you were up against some pressure before. So I'll, I'll retract my giddiness comment and change it to, you know, hey, we, we're very fortunate. This gives us some flexibility, because now our, our taxable base has gone up. And there's some, we, we, it gives us something to work with. And I, and I don't want you to work with it, because it's another $2 here, and another $3 there, and another $4 there. And at the end of this, for some of us, it's going to be $150 to $200 a month that we're going to be paying every month going forward. And none of us got a $200 increase in our salary to go along with that. So you can tax people out of their home. And it's that, I'm gonna go back to that unintended, unintended consequences, because I'm a loyal Burlington person. But at some point, at some point, you say uncle. And that's, Burlington isn't growing. And, and I think there's a lot of people who have said uncle already. So I just think you need to keep that in mind, I would ask you to. And understand that $2.50 here, $3 there, you know, $5 here. There's so many taxing entities. I'm, I'm amazed, when you start looking at all the people that tax us, it, it is staggering, and it is shameful. And I'll let it go at that.
I would just like to, I just think we should always be careful when we, when we look at appearances or what somebody else is thinking or something, we should stick with facts, what people are saying. And Eric, we all live in the same community, you know what I'm saying? I mean, if it affects you, it affects me. It all affects all of us, so it's not like we're immune because we sit behind this bench. There's, there's only so much that can be done. And to me, and I'm not being a Weisenheimer, I'm totally serious. My seat's coming up at the end of this year. You know what I'm saying? I mean, somebody needs to step up to the plate, because we all live here. And maybe there's people that can do a better job, but I'm serious, I'm not being a Weisenheimer, I'm totally serious. Step up to the plate, brother. Step up to the plate, because maybe you see something that I don't. But make no mistake about it, make no mistake about it. I'm not giddy about this, I mean, I don't claim that as a victory, because we didn't raise taxes. Everybody gets it, we all know what's going on here, and yeah, it's happening. My water bill went up too, and it's, it's unbelievable. You know, you, you'd think I've got 14 showers and, and three bathrooms, but that's the way it is. That's the way it is. And I just have to, I just have to learn to deal with it. And, and I'm hoping that down the road, we can, we can get some, we can get some type of relief coming for, for all the citizens, but. I'll stop there. Anybody else wanna say something?
No.
All right. Let's, uh.
Your Honor, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Moved and second, can Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Raker?
Aye. Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the fiscal year 2019, 2020 budgets.
Second.
Kathleen, let's vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Raker?
Aye.
Okay, brings us to number four, which is consideration of a 2019 A general obligation loan agreement and a principal amount not to exceed 4,900,000.
This is a borrowing for our CIP capital improvement plan items for the fiscal year 2020 budget. It is inclusive of the 500,000 for the PD demolition, former PD demolition, not the current one. We don't wanna get rid of that facility. A fire truck at 633,000, or 635,000. Signalization in the, on the Highway 61 corridor through town, 475,000 borrowed for that, in that neighborhood. 1.55 million for general street rehab projects. Broadway extension, 890,000-ish, out in the industrial park. And then 620,000 in that neighborhood for our share of airport runway improvements. So for the 4.9 million, that's, that is also inclusive of some closing costs on it. The 4.9 million dollars included on this resolution and part of, of what you're approving is authorization of the pre-levy. The amount of, to be included in next year's budget for repayment is estimated at 147,446. This is a, and I, I think that's, that's the base information that's off of it. Most of the rest has already been covered in separate pieces by Travis and, from Piper Jaffrey. We do get, still have to go through a bond rating process. We had our interview last week with Standard and Poor's, we get some news back, maybe next week. We have to have, we have to have a discussion with them on Friday. And then we get a number back from them in regards to what a rating is that'll be used for the bond sale. Bond sale occurs, is it April 1st or May 1st? I keep, keeping track of these details. I think it's April, it's, it's April 1st or May 1st. And it probably says in here, and I'm just missing it, but. Now just leave it open then for questions.
Okay. Let's start with the audience, any questions from the audience? I see none, counsel?
Disgusting access.
Yeah, okay. All right then, can I get a motion to close?
Your Honor, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Moved and second, Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Raker?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution express, expressing intent to enter into a loan agreement approving preliminary official statement for general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2019 A, and authorizing debt service levy.
Second.
Kathleen, let's vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Raker?
Aye.
Okay, that takes us to resolutions tonight, number one.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the final plat of the Ozarks Estates subdivision.
Second. Moved and second. Mr. Tisland?
This is a one lot subdivision located off Fleming Court, just to the east of Roosevelt Avenue, behind Burke Cleaners, for reference. Surrounding Lot 160 here. Essentially, creating one, one lot around this kind of pie-shaped lot, and then a couple outlots that are intended to be combined with adjacent lots. So this is kind of a, a little better reference for the location here, around this property here, with Burke Cleaners to the west, and Applebee's here just below it, on Fleming Court. But no new infrastructure needed, and just creating the one lot, so classified as a minor subdivision.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Kathleen? Let's vote on it.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Riker?
Aye.
Number two?
Your honor, I have a resolution approving the final plat of Snidler Edition subdivision.
Second.
Moved and second. Mr. Tisland?
This again, similar situation, one lot, uh, being created, uh, subdivided off of this, uh, lot seven here to the west and intended to be combined with lot six to the north of it, um, to allow that property to have a little larger, uh, rear yard. So not creating a new lot, but just shifting, uh, some of the property, um, between, uh, this property here at four twenty, uh, and cutting off part of the rear yard that is in excess for that lot and adding it to the lot, uh, property to the north to give them a, an actual rear yard.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel? James?
No, just give it to me after your, the vote.
Just give it to you after?
Yeah, let me interrupt.
Just take it, man.
No, I'll vote first.
Okay, let's vote, Kathleen.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Riker?
Aye.
James?
So as you get to the next item, this is my fault that this is on here. I was supposed to not have it on here. Uh, so I apologize that item, the third item is on the agenda. Uh, it was requested to be taken off and, but since it's on here, the, unless you're wanting to go forward with it, even though the request has been kind of withdrawn at this time, uh, the best way to do that would be to have someone, uh, introduce and then not have a second and, and let the issue die for the, for the night.
This is James's fault. Okay. Well, we're just telling you again and everybody watching-
I didn't say it's James' fault, I said it's coming up.
This is Jim's fault. Okay.
Do you wanna say that a third time? You've said it twice. Do you wanna say it a third time?
This is Jim Ferno's fault. Number three?
Your honor, I have a resolution for removal of the city-owned turnaround at the east end of Polk Street.
Well, since there's no second, we're gonna let it die for the lack of a second. Okay. Can I get a harrumph? I didn't get a harrumph out of that guy. Okay. Number four?
Your honor, I have a resolution approving the purchase of replacement of the fifteen ton tandem axle dump truck for Public Works.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. McGregor?
Good evening. Uh, this resolution is something I had spoke at the end of the meeting last week. Um, in my memo, I, I discussed, we had a, a, a fifteen ton tandem axle truck that was involved in an accident, uh, at Summer and Harrison where a truck ran a red light. Uh, it was thought that it could be repaired at the time, um, once the, uh, group that we hired, uh, to try and repair it found out that there was more issues beyond that. Our insurance company decided to, uh, total it out in which we received, uh, twenty-one thousand six hundred or seven hundred and thirty dollars. We, uh, we used this truck to haul, uh, haul snow, haul rock, haul sand. We, uh, were in need of it being replaced. Uh, so what this resolution is granting is, is preapproval to spend up two hundred thousand dollars to purchase the fifteen ton tandem axle truck. Uh, per the specifications that I attached in there, uh, the resolution mentions that. This funds, uh, would come from split road use tax and sewer fund, uh, minus the insurance payout. Uh, in the memo, I did talk about, uh, for this current fiscal year's CIP, uh, we are, uh, we are under budget of spending in the equipment category by, by forty-five thousand dollars. So while it is a hit, uh, to take, uh, you know, potentially seventy-nine thousand dollars worth of unaccounted for equipment purchasing, we, we have been pretty frugal in purchasing other equipment, so, um, it won't be too, it won't be as big of an impact, but, um, you know, I would, once upon, once we, once we, uh, get a, a used price, uh, that's what we're looking at. A new piece of equipment like this is in the hundred and fifty to two hundred bracket, depending on the bells and whistles that you get put on it. Uh, so we, we're not looking at something like that. Uh, but if, in order for us to get something within the last, uh, decade, we are, we're gonna have to be spending at least, uh, you know, somewhere close to the hundred thousand bracket. So we will, we'll, we'll look at something for less than that.
Minus the, minus the insurance.
Correct.
Yeah, how much did we get insurance-wise?
Twenty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. So it was a, it was a twenty-some-year-old truck. Um, so its depreciated value was, was not very much.
Any questions from the audience? I see none. Counsel? We're good? Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Riker?
Aye.
Number five?
Your honor, I have a resolution approving requests for proposals for redevelopment of the former police facility.
Second.
You know how you guys were kinda excited last, last week of the work session, how you got moved up the agenda?
We've already had this discussion that we're a little disappointed we got to the end of the-
Your luck ran out today.
No good deed goes unfounded.
You may have lost a little clout in the last week, which is why that's happened. I don't know.
I, I'm not sure what happened, but-
Some days it sunshine, some days it rain, my friend.
But we're here. We're here. We're at this point. So, um, I guess I'm not sure if it was in your pocket or not, but we did have a draft RFP, uh, that we put together, uh, that we're proposing to send out, uh, for redevelopment of the former police building. Um, the idea, if, uh, you were to approve this, that we would send this out hopefully by the end of this week. Uh, we've got a list of about a hundred developers, um, that, that we have at our organization, uh, I guess development companies or individuals, and then about forty architectural firms. And then because it's an opportunity zone and, and the new opportunity zone legislation, we've also added about forty opportunity funds that we've got contact information for that this would get submitted to as well. Um, and then Jesse, uh, through, uh, himself and Terrace Realty, uh, Real Estate Group would send it out to their network and all their individuals and go through their typical marketing as well. So the RFP itself, uh, I'm not gonna go through a ton of details here, but there's about six pages. There's a section that just gives a little brief background about Burlington, the community. Uh, there's a page that goes through some of the recent studies that I think people would wanna know about and some awards, uh, that the communities received. There's a page specifically about the building itself and just some characteristics. And then we also included a page about the neighboring building because it is also technically for sale, uh, via Jesse and Terrace Real Estate Group, in case somebody wanted to do a project with the two in tandem. So we gave some information about that and some information about how to reach us if they wanna tour the site. Uh, we have the required contents of what somebody would need to submit if they wanna put a proposal together. And then the, the last page is about specifics on offer price and incentives. And that's pretty, uh, pretty much the, uh, information that you're probably most interested in. And we went through this last week, uh, but I'll just recap some of these things. Somebody wants to put a proposal together for redevelopment, they would have to put up an offer price, uh, minimum price of a hundred thousand dollars to the city. And just to clarify that, on your question earlier, when you were asking about the hundred thousand dollars, that would be a payment from a developer to the city as a purchase price. So they would pay a hundred thousand dollars and then upon, this would get worked out if somebody made a proposal and you accepted it in the actual purchase agreement, but upon, uh, the way we word it here, upon substantial completion, uh, they would receive a one-time payment back from the city for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then we put a note in here that they could request alternative, um, incentives. And that gets back to your question also, Matt, last week about what if, uh, somebody wanted to offer more than, or wanted more than the a hundred and fifty thousand. So we're saying that's the minute, that's basically what the city's offering, but if they wanted to propose something different, we kinda leave the door open for them to do that. Uh, we list out the current tax abatement, um, offerings for Upper Street Residential for the downtown area and then the commercial, uh, tax abatement scale. And then there's two, uh, tax exemptions too that you can apply at the state level for historic property rehab or business property tax credit. Those all just depend on what somebody's gonna propose, whether they can utilize those or not. And then we highlight, uh, that the building is in an opportunity zone and could be eligible for the, uh, federal, uh, opportunity fund, uh, incentive. And then we list out, um, property, uh, tax credits or income tax credits that are available, state and federal historic tax credits. Uh, redevelopment tax credit, used to be the Brownfield tax credit through the state of Iowa. Uh, and then there's a new market tax credit program. And they also listed, and we had some discussion about this, I, I left it in here, it's the Iowa Housing Tax Credit Program, that'd be the low-income housing tax credit program. And the reason I left it in, I guess, I didn't wanna necessarily, if somebody wanted to propose that, let them do that, but I also just put a, a note here that it wouldn't be recommended to do that, 'cause I think just from, uh, things that I've heard from the council before, that, that probably not as competitive of, of a proposal, but, uh, again, I just wanted to leave it open to let somebody propose what they wanted to and then you guys could make that decision if you'd like. So those are the incentives that we have listed. And then the last thing is just tells you where you have to submit your proposal to, so. Do you have any specific questions?
I would also note, this has, they're due back May twenty-eighth?
Yes. Yeah, I did mention that. Yeah, May twenty-eighth, so, uh, a little over two months.
Still want to know pretty quick.
And if, you know, depending on what we get back, whether it's none, one, two, it'll come to council for, at a subsequent meeting. If you have a, a, an offer that you're interested in pursuing after that time, in June, you would go through a process where you'd essentially do a, set a public hearing, uh, for time in the future where you let the public know, hey, we've got this potential offer for sale of what, and this structure for offering it for sale. Provide a thirty-day notice of that, uh, prior to the public hearing being held. At the public hearing, you could hear comments for or against, you could hear alternative proposals if you, uh, if there were any to be offered at that time. Uh, after that hearing, then you would go through an official process of awarding, uh, a final, or approving a final agreement. Because of that timeframe on the back end is where is, if you wanna have a discussion about, uh, you, you get viable offer and you actually have a structure where it's under the terms that are listed here with a hundred and fifty going back, you can have a discussion about, do we, are we talking, how are we gonna cover that fifty thousand? Are we using economic development funds, funds out of local sales tax? Are you using TIF funds? Uh, if you're using TIFs, you're gonna have to go through the process of amending the TIF plan at that point. What, however you're doing, you're gonna have to make that decision, but that's on the back end after you see what we've gotten for proposals.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, James.
I, I was excited when I read your RFP about how Burlington's number one in business projects on the Mississippi, we're number one in the nation for growth and purchasing power. Our housing shows strong demand, the Tiger Grant. I was so excited when I read that page, guys, I had to print it off. I'm like, wow! Made me wanna buy the building. So I hope we get some takers.
You can submit a proposal.
Okay.
Thank you, Batman. Questions from the audience? I see none. Thank you, Leon. Uh, counsel? Right on.
Thank you, gentlemen, for being forward. Thank you.
Thank you for waiting.
Kathleen, let's vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Riker?
Aye.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving addendum to hotel motel tax agreement between the city of Burlington and the Burlington, West Burlington area Chamber of Commerce, Gregor Burlington Convention Visitors Bureau.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Mister, uh, yes, Mr. Sheehan.
Leon Sheehan, eighteen twenty-one Mount Pleasant Street. I guess my question to hear is what are we amending and how much?
Uh, the resolution resolved the addendum to the agreement between the city and the chamber, uh, reflects the change in language within the agreement, uh, from having eleven meetings during the course of the year to six meetings during the course of the year. Uh, since, uh, our agreement with them specifies a number of, of meetings to be held, as they change their meeting schedule, we need to modify our agreement with them to reflect that.
So we aren't changing the sharing of the hotel motel tax?
Nope.
No further questions?
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Nope.
Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Riker?
Aye.
All right, well done. Um, at this time, we'll take comments from the audience. Is there one? I see none. Mr. Tisland? Kathleen? Your hair looks wonderful tonight. I was gonna do something with mine, I just didn't get around to it. Peanut butter?
Some of us will be in Des Moines later this week for legislative days. I know myself, Jim, Nick, Matt's going, so I hope we have good weather.
Three to five inches of snow expected on Thursday in Des Moines.
Seriously? Are you serious? What, starting when?
I don't know. I just saw that it was on Thursday.
Well, thank you, Mr. bearer of bad news.
Why don't we let him talk?
I don't know, man. Somebody needs to shut him down. Anything else, peanut butter? Okay. Mr. Phillips?
Think spring. That's it. Think spring.
Think spring.
Tired of winter. Everybody is.
Um, okay. I want to, uh, did we already make mention of the, uh, award? Could you make mention of that, please?
No, no, where is it?
The, the traveling trophy's traveling with us, uh, we were supposed to go get it, uh-
I'm gonna go get it.
No, we, we, the city might not know, but Rotary put on a, a little bit of a friendly competition, a fundraiser for the, uh, among the service groups for the food pantries, basically, we went to our Hy-Vee and, and, uh, had a target list of items to shop for within a certain budget, and the person, the, the team that got closest to the two-hundred-dollar figure, uh, won a, a cup, and, and, uh, we were recruited, uh, by Rinker, or Matt Rinker there at the last minute, 'cause he was running the event. The timer or the scorekeeper timer?
The, yeah.
Timer.
Scorekeeper.
And he had-
This award is huge, I mean, your cattle could drink out of it, it's huge.
Yeah, he has a secret weapon for us, he volunteered his wife, Sophie, she did a great job. And it was, yeah, Shane and I went, and we, uh, we were number one. We killed. And it was over, how much, sixteen hundred dollars worth raised?
Uh, yeah, we, we, we purchased about seventeen hundred items, um, and we spent about two, about, oh, eighteen hundred bucks doing that. Uh, all the money was raised through local organizations and, uh, service organizations, uh, Rotary, Kiwanis, Lions, um, and all the mon, all the food was split up among three local food pantries, so, uh, they were thrilled, and, um, we filled three cars full of food and dropped them off, so it was pretty fun.
It was a fun event, thank you for doing that.
Didn't you guys get it right within five cents or something?
Yeah, so I think your winning number was like, uh-
One ninety-five, twenty-nine.
Yeah, a hundred and ninety-five bucks, and they had to, the, the team that won was the team that spent as close as they could to two hundred dollars without going over.
And got everything on the list.
And got at least one, or the minimum number of everything on the list, and they achieved it.
Awesome, guys.
And they gave us two extra points for being eye candy for the day. Okay, I want to, uh, I want to give a congratulations out to the Great River Christian, uh, school basketball, girls and boys basketball team, they won the two thousand nineteen Hustle Cup. I was the coach.
Yeah.
I want to, uh, say thank you to the Kiwanis for, uh, inviting me to speak, I want to say thanks to Carlos Ruiz who came and sang for me as well. That was a fantastic event for Pastor's Day, and then, uh, this week, I'll be also heading up to Des Moines, uh, to do the opening prayer at the Senate for, uh, this is my, they asked me to come back, and you know, I made light of it, and I want to apologize for that. Uh, it, it's an honor to really do this, it truly is, and anytime I can go somewhere and represent this beautiful city and represent my Lord and Savior, I'm always, uh, honored, and it's a privilege, and I'm gonna go up and do my best, uh, but this will, uh, probably be my last time, so I'm gonna make the best of it, I'm gonna see if I can pray long enough that they'll kick me out, we'll see how that goes. Also, just want to give a shout out to my, uh, baby number one, uh, she just had another birthday, she's twenty-nine, I know, I don't look it, I know, I don't look it.
I didn't say anything.
We were great.
You were thinking it.
Our silence was a second.
But I just, I want, want to, uh, to say happy birthday to her, she's a, she's a wonderful kid, uh, that's all I got. Mayor Pro Tim?
I got nothing this evening, thank you.
You got nothing?
I got nothing.
Alright, we'll let it slide then. Counselor?
I have anything.
You got nothing, or does Jim? James?
Agency Street, uh, at Columbus, you will see, uh, traffic poles, the mast arms come in this week, you should see them start being set up. Um, also on Agency Street, I don't know if you've noticed, um, just east of Curran, um, probably by Gertrude, there's a, uh, an A-frame, barricade sitting there where there's a sinkhole, uh, there's believed to be a sewer issue, but we're gonna try and do a little bit more, uh, research tomorrow and dye some sewers to see where it's at, but a section of Agency Street, while that's being worked on, may have to be rerouted because it's in the middle of the road, and digging to it and accessing it is, would take up both lanes of travel, uh, so there would be a detour and, but there'll be a press release prior to that happen.
Is that in the new section?
Hmm?
Is that in the new section?
No, it's the old section, it's the asphalt part, uh, going down the hill. Um, also, I will be meeting tomorrow, uh, with the contractor, uh, down at the Hawkeye Hole, um, the river level is down to s- eleven-five, last I checked. Um, there should be enough room, hopefully, to get the planks in, um, and get pumping so that we can get in before, uh, spring flooding happens. Um, I've offered up some of our staff and trash pumps to get the Hawkeye tunnels pumped quicker, um, because we can't mess around, I, it, we've had National Weather Services, uh, reports sent to us on the high prospect of flooding this spring, and, uh, to HESCO's ring around that hole, uh, is, is not something we want to have to do again, so.
Would, would you, uh, address, uh, Central Indivision?
Central Indivision, um, you may have noticed, the lights, uh, are a little longer, uh, or delayed compared to in recent. Uh, we have loops, which loops are, are devices that you insert into the concrete panels, and they sense that there's cars over top of them. Uh, because of the freeze saw, saw cycle that we've had, uh, some of the loops are broken, uh, they've, the concrete's cracked, and it's, uh, disrupted the, the function of the loop. Uh, so they're, they're on a timer right now, so, um, it, it'll be a little longer for you to wait. However, this spring, we actually had a project planned for there, uh, you know how I talked about the pucks? That's one of those projects that we had planned on, there's some concrete we want to replace prior to putting the pucks into the ground, essentially, it's, uh, you know, two, three-inch diameter puck that you, you know, you drill a hole in, then you epoxy over the top, and it, it'll function very similar to a loop, um, but at a, at a lot lesser rate, so. We'll try and do that this spring whenever we can get concrete done, so.
Thank you.
Right on.
Thanks, Dick.
When it warms up. People did get residential valuations here in mail the last couple of weeks, those do not come from the city. County assessor, uh, is the proud bearer of that, and I'm sure that they will have lots of fun discussions as that goes on. Those valuations are, as people look at where do they fit within the cycle, uh, they are the basis for, uh, the property taxes that you pay, not in a budget we just approved, but in the FY twenty-dash-twenty-one budget, so, there is a timeframe here where folks, I, I assume there will be more than one who will be trying to get changes made to their valuations over the next few months, uh, but that will be for, they're gonna be, those are folks who are dealing with what their valuations will be for the following budget year, that's not part of this budget year that we just did.
So are you got? Yes, sir?
That's all I got.
Jim, when was the last time that was done, do you recall?
How often do they do the comprehensive changes, what?
Yeah, that's what I thought, ninety-eight.
But they'd like to do it every ten.
I will, I will say that I went to a presentation that Matt gave, and he said that the reason that it was initiated this time is when the state starts to see home sale prices, um, occurring out, significantly outside of current valuation of properties, it triggers the state to say that the county needs to do an evaluation.
They have a, they have a percentage, they have a percentage that they are allowed to have for variation, but once it goes over, it mandates-
Them to come in and do a reevaluation of the entire county, which is what happened, which is why every, both commercial and residential property was-
But that doesn't mean that there aren't problems with the valuations in individual situations.
I'm just letting you know why the entire valuation took place, so.
Anything else? Can I get a motion?
Motion to close?
Second.
Moved and second, Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Rinker?
Rinker.
Uh, aye. Rinker.
And in conclusion, a man who siteth on the red hot stove shall surely rise. Means adjourned.